Are we ready?
Yes.
Ready, okay.
And much more.
Welcome, today is Thursday, October 13th, to the school committee meeting. I'd like to open the session, is there any public participation? Great.
You're in January.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay. There's none, okay. So, we'd like to invite up, actually, come up and say your name, we're going to discuss an update on the school trips that are being offered for the year.
I'll introduce Melanie Constantakis and Rebecca Bradley, who are both teachers here in the high school. And welcome, who just came in, is our assistant principal, Bill McCarthy.
Who has more facial hair than I do.
Good evening. Do you want to set it up?
Well, I should say Melanie Constantakis-Schwarz.
Yes, that's fine, I go by both.
I know, I know. Well, one of the efforts we have been looking at as a school district is being able to offer more opportunities for students to be able to do traveling, particularly international trips. As you know, last year, we put together a global competence certification, and as part of that, one of the requirements of that is to do some form of travel. And so, in that effort, we have been seeing more people that would be interested in supporting and chaperoning and all the work involved in providing these opportunities to students. And tonight, we're going to mention a few of them, the actual trip information you have in your packets in Novus, and the approval of those trips is in the consent agenda. So unless you want to change it and vote approval after a presentation. So, we've invited our staff that are going to be chaperoning these trips, organizing them, to come and talk about them, since in a couple of cases, these trips are new trips. And in the past, when we've had a new trip, we've had people come in and talk about it, so you have a chance to ask questions, they can answer them. But with trips that you've seen before, but there's just some details, then we just present the information and someone doesn't come to present. So, that's sort of background on why they're here tonight.
Great. Okay. We'd like to talk about the trips.
Sure. Yeah. My name's Rebecca Walsh Bradley, and I'm an English teacher at the high school. And Tim Martin and I, Tim Martin is also an English teacher at the high school, are proposing a trip over spring break, April break, to England. It's an eight day, or it's really a nine day trip, but a travel day on each side. The students would spend four days in London, and then they would spend three days in the countryside, which would include Oxford, Stratford-upon-Avon, Bath, Salisbury, and Stonehenge. I just want to, I want to tell you the favorite day, or my favorite day of the trip is actually the last day of the trip in London, and that's because Tim and I kind of, we were able to work with a company, which is Explorica, and add and subtract a bunch of things based on what we thought would both sort of interest the students and would be the most educational. And so, day eight is, we would visit the Tate Museum, and probably walk across the Millennium Bridge, which is really cool. We were going to go to the Charles Dickens Museum, which is actually the house that he lived in, in London, and worked in, and is supposed to be wonderful. We would also go on the London Eye, which is really just fun. And finally, we would end the day with a visiting, or sorry, watching a production at the Globe Theater. So, there's lots of great stuff on the trip, but I think of all the days that day, I think is pretty amazing. We have a lot of interest so far, and are hoping to get even more.
Great, any questions? Yes, Mr. Hayner.
And this will go for all the trips and stuff. I noticed in that particular trip, it said for scholarships, there's one for every six. Is that limited?
So, yeah, so, we were, right now, we have between 18 and 20 students that have shown a lot of interest. If we, so if we get 18 students, we would have one free spot, because the other spots cover the cost of the chaperones traveling. So, six students would cover Tim, and then 12 would cover me, and then, so it wouldn't be until we hit 18 that there would be a full scholarship available.
I guess my question is to the school department, or whatever, if a student is not able to pay, and say you had three of those students that would be like that, what do we do?
Dr. Reddy, you want to?
Well, there would be options in this. One would be to divide it three ways. Another would be to reduce the cost for all of the students. So, there are options with this possible, with this extra position.
No, I'm not talking about, I'm saying if you had three students showing financial need, and what's going on right now is potentially, there's only one, would the school augment for the other two?
What I'm saying is that it has a cash value to it, and it can be divided by three, if there were three students that had need.
But what if three students, that would not, if a student sincerely wants to go?
Would there be a complete scholarship? Yes, that's one of the options with this as well, it could be a complete scholarship. One of the things that I feel very strongly about is trying to find money to provide some scholarship for students. Whether we can be in the position of having an entirely free trip, I'm not sure that that is probably possible, or even ideal, because what we're hoping to do is to have enough notice with these trips that students can help, you know, earn some money to, for the trip. In fact, our long-term goal on this is to actually have a calendar of trips as much as two to three years out. Again, in fact, one of the trips that we talked about is a trip we used to have here, and kids knew about this trip when they entered the high school, and so they might have had three years or four years to prepare and save for it. And I do think it's important for students to do that, because they're more invested in it, instead of entirely giving a whole, complete, free trip to one student.
I think it's very, very important that trips are available to everyone, not just to those that financially afford it. I think the idea of having a calendar several years ahead of time, I think that gives opportunities for even the community to support these programs and stuff. And I would suggest coming back, not only sharing with us the results of the trip, and have the students come in, but share with the community as well, so that they understand and become invested in it in the future.
May I add more comment on, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, we have actually talked about this before, the financial need of some students to be scholarshiped on these trips. I think you're all familiar with Mary Villano, the former principal. One thing she's been working on is developing a fundraising program throughout the year that would create a cash of money that could be pulled upon, not just this year, but in years future, for that very reason. You know, there's different events in mind, it's still getting started, so there is nothing that's set in stone yet, but we all agree that there is a need.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Would you like me to talk about South Africa?
Yes, that'd be great. Do you have more questions about London? I don't want to pull away if there's more.
Nope.
So, I'm Melanie Constantakis-Schwarz, and I am proposing that we take a trip to South Africa this February. This is a slightly different kind of trip, it's not a tour per se, it is focused on a cultural and service-based learning trip. So, the students would go to South Africa, we would be, we would visit the prison where Nelson Mandela was held, we would be out in some of the environmental habitats, like there's some gardens there that are amazing environmental habitats, that are one of the only places in the world that you can see certain species of plants, and fish, and birds, et cetera. I'm desperate to go to the, it is a baby panther cub sanctuary, I don't know if we'll get that in there, but just because I like cats. We're also doing a safari, and the bulk of our time, however, will be spent out in the townships. We'll be working in the schools, in the black townships that are desperately underfunded, unlike anything we see in the United States. The students will be working, providing some fun activities for the students at recess, doing some reading tutoring, some support, and just trying to bring some extra hope and light and life into those communities. So, we'll be doing that for five out of our 12 days. Our trip is a little bit longer, the killer thing with South Africa is the travel time. It's actually surprisingly quite affordable, because once we're in country, it's not that expensive, it's the tickets that are so pricey. And because we are spending so much of our time doing service work, as opposed to more traditional tourist things that would be very pricey, it comes to being relatively affordable trip overall. To address Bill's point about affordability, we are definitely looking at that, I'm going to be approaching the Martin Luther King Committee and the Human Rights Committee to see if they would be willing to donate towards some of our costs of the trip, and to kind of bring the overall cost down with the, oh, it's totally slipping my mind now, Kathy just mentioned it, the international, what is it, the, that we have students get the certification of?
The global certificate.
Right, and there is some funds in that for travel, right? Isn't there a $250 scholarship embedded in that? So, we're hoping that's something that students will also be able to use towards this trip, and we're trying to find as many ways to bring down the overall cost in general, to make this as affordable as possible. Students have also spoken to me about what they might be able to do to do some fundraising. So, it's definitely a concern, and something we take really seriously, because we want as many people to have this experience as possible. So, something we're really aware of.
Great, thanks. Any questions?
I'll put a plug in too, Melanie's talking about, we are looking very seriously for funds. We had, for one of our trips, our Japan trip last year, we had a member of our community donate a complete scholarship for the trip. So, what I'm hoping, and we're starting to begin, Bill was talking about this, is creating a fund that we would have as a source for scholarships. So, if anyone in the community would like to donate to such a fund, please know that we are looking for that. And in some instances, we'll be looking at a needs base, a combination of merit too, so we have a combination of factors.
So, if someone in the community wanted to donate, who would they?
They could send it to the Arlington Public Schools expressly for, you know, scholarships for foreign travel.
Great, thanks.
Yes, and the tour company we're going with is offering a scholarship as well, for students who show exceptional leadership and community service as well. So, they're offering, I believe it's $500 off for a student that the faculty nominates as well, that feels that they would really benefit from this trip.
Great, thanks. Any other questions? Great.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill McCarthy, I'm the assistant principal at Arlington High School. I just wanted to start off by saying thank you for taking the time to hear us on these trips, and thank you to Rebecca and to Melanie for helping plan these, these are incredible opportunities for our students. I've always been a believer of hands-on learning, and you can't get more hands-on when being placed in the country, whether you're going to a panther cub, or going to the Globe Theater. I think it's an outstanding opportunity that we afford these students. So, the trip that I'm proposing, we have done in the past, as Dr. Bodie has said, it's through EF Educational Tours, and we will be touring through Krakow, Poland, and Prague, the Czech Republic. I've actually been part of this trip, I think this will be my fifth time. The trip is being run in conjunction with Marie Radozzo, who's a retired teacher here at Arlington High School, my former mentor, and Rob DiLoreto, the dean of students and Fusco host at Arlington High. The idea behind the tour sprung from a course that Marie used to teach here called the Literature of War and Genocide. I took that course on when Marie retired, and the course has since evolved to be entitled Missing Voices. And it covers a broad range of different groups that are underrepresented, whether it be in literature or in the world. So, this trip itself would pull upon that curriculum, as well as the curriculum of the US History Department. And what we would do is, the three main sites we would attend would be the Terrazine Concentration Camp, Oscar Schindler's Factory, and Auschwitz-Birkenau. The trip itself, right now, is set up for 12 students from Arlington High School, and we would be traveling with 12 students from Matanyan High School, and currently, one student from Reading High School, but we would see how that works out. The trip would be after school, it would be during the summer, it would be in June. And as I've said before, we've done this trip five times, it is very moving and emotionally powerful, we do talk to the students at length about the history of the Holocaust, its impact to the world, how we still feel its presence in literature. I was actually just seeing last night, there's a new movie coming out that deals with Holocaust denial, and rebuking that. So, I don't know if there are any questions about the tour, or places we'll be going.
Any questions? Yes, Dr. Austin Meppe.
My question kind of applies to all of them, and it's actually more of an administrative question. I'm thinking back to when there's been varying levels of unrest in the world over the past few years, and that we've had questions of whether we should change plans or things. And I understand we can't possibly predict the future, but I'm wondering if, as part of the notification in literature that's given out to parents for the trips, if we should be giving something that says, just basically a big explanation that we can't, just what I said, that we can't predict the future, that we follow State Department guidelines for whether or not the student should go on the trip, and, but we're not trying to micromanage, you know, I'm thinking about when there were bombings here in Spain, or in places, and that we feel, I think following the State Department guidelines is the best thing we can do, or we should come up with whatever it is that we decide, but that we should be also conveying that to the parents. As you see what I'm saying.
Similar to the message we give about snow, or.
Yes, I have lived through those times, and have been part of a situation where we've had to cancel a trip, that has happened. And we do use the State Department guidelines on this. And we could put a disclaimer in our forms that, you know, this could be subject to cancellation, should there be an incident that there is restricted travel put out by the State Department. Our hope, of course, is this will not happen, but that's a good point. Now, I think that we, one of the things we've insisted on all of our trips is that the travel insurance be part of the cost of the trip. I mean, we've, that is, it used to be optional, but it can't be optional, it has to be there. So, I think that we would be covered in case this happens.
Actually, speaking of that, I think there are two points. One is financially, all three trips, if there is a, if the State Department issues a warning, there is an insurance policy to pay back the students if it is deemed unsafe to go. But I think the other concern is just letting parents know that there are, unfortunately, we do live in an unsafe world at times. And we want, I mean, I've traveled with both Melanie and Rebecca before, and multiple other teachers, and whenever we travel, we obviously want to put our students first in our priority of taking care of their safety, but there are liability concerns, we don't know what's going to happen. But having traveled with both of them before, and I do know that we would put the students first, but it is important to make parents aware of that. So, I do know we hold parent evenings, where we would talk about the trip and any concerns that might arise from it, and we do open ourselves up to emails if they have, or questions at any time if anything does arise. Traveling in the past, I have gone to Vietnam, Morocco, Spain, I have traveled all over the world, and I can recognize that, for the parents, it's a huge issue of trust. They're trusting us to bring their child on this trip, and to bring them home. And so, we recognize that we do keep those lines of communication open, whether they're cell phones, emails while we're on the trip, and leading up to the trip.
It sounded like, I was thinking about, similar to our inclement weather sort of warning, where we say, this is our policy, but of course, if any parent feels that there's that situation, they save, that's at your discretion, or something like that, although then there would be a financial implication to that. If a parent chosen their own, because they felt, then, and it wasn't sort of officially canceled, they would assume the financial costs.
Correct. I think that Mr. McCarthy better captured my concerns, that just conveyed to parents that we know it's an unsafe world, but we feel it's important for the kids to get out in it, but still, you've got to know that, you know, there's problems, we'll do the best we can to avoid them, but there's problems.
Any other questions, comments?
Anyone want to sign on for the trip?
I want to sign on for all of these trips. No, these are going to be in the, so these, the vote for this will happen in the consent agenda, it'll be routine unless one of our members pulls it out, but we just wanted to have the opportunity to hear about the trips and ask any questions, so thank you for coming.
Just real quick, is there a New York trip, or is that something totally separate from you folks?
No, there is a New York trip.
It's separate from them, though.
It just got changed.
So, what I understand is these are not all the trips, these are just a, right.
So, these are three of the larger international trips, the New York trip is actually for our international students.
Oh, right.
They will be going down to New York, but as Karen said, the dates have changed, so I believe once I get that information, I'll pass it along to everyone.
My only concern was that on the agenda, it said, it stated originally approved on that date. I know this is a recurring trip that we do for the international students on a regular basis. We approved that one in 2015 for that specific one. I just don't want.
Under the consent agenda, we are going to prove.
Right, but the way it was presented, it says originally approved.
I see, oh.
The concept was originally approved, but each individual one's going to be approved separately as it comes forward.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, that's all I wanted to make.
Right, we should clarify that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, very exciting.
Thank you very much.
And I, which means I did not welcome Ms. Higgins, our AEA rep at the committee, and today, we have a student rep, Lucy Vogus, is that, Vogus, sorry, who is a school council member. And we, it's been our tradition from time to time, we've sometimes fallen in this tradition to have student reps at our meetings, and we welcome the opportunity to hear from students, so I invite you to go back to the committee, if there's something that you might want to talk about or present, just give us enough time, you know, to sort of put it on the agenda, but we'd love to hear your perspectives and your concerns, and so, I welcome that. So, thank you for being here. Okay, so next on the agenda, so, the next thing on the agenda is the buffer zone report, as I understand, Mr. Remi was not able to make it tonight, so we need to push it to the next meeting.
Could I ask for a copy of that report ahead of time?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, we didn't get the copy, so he wasn't able to make it. So, the diversity hiring report, Mr. Spiegel.
Thank you. So, you have the report in your packet in Novus, it's very similar to, the same format as previous years, showing the staff that we've hired. One explanation that is sometimes confusing is the total staff that we had last year in the different categories, didn't, they didn't all carry over to the previous hires who started this year, when we ran the report last, a couple weeks ago. And that's because there was some attrition, some people resigned, or left the district for various reasons. So, that's why the numbers are a little bit lower from the previous hires than the total staff, and why our gains are not great, because we are not retaining all the staff that we hire in certain ethnic categories, or, so it is making it challenging to increase our diversity as much as we would like. We have had some good hires this year in a few key teaching positions in the district. We have hired Asian-American teachers at the elementary level, in special education and kindergarten, Hispanic teacher in social studies at the high school, and black and African-American teachers and social workers in the district in special education and in social work. And then we have other new employees of diverse backgrounds from, in other job categories, obviously, teaching assistants, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, substitute teachers, and others. And we, you know, continue to strive to increase the diversity, and it is challenging to always retain, we also need to focus on retention of all the employees that we do have.
Questions, comments, Ms. Starks?
I'm going to ask the same question I asked last year, which was, I would like to see these as percentages, and I would like to see what the percentages are of students. So, my goal would be at some point to have, you know.
They match.
They match, right? Though we're trying to move closer to making them match, but I don't really know what those are, so I would love to know, well, what are the percentage of students that are Asian Black, Hispanic, Native American, white, and what are, what's the percentage then of staff that meet those as well?
Well, I can't, can I answer? Off the top of my head, I can't tell you by each race, but what I can tell you is that the percent of white teachers is about 84 percent, teachers and professional staff, whereas our students, about 75 percent are white. So, there is a disparity, and the goal is that there is more congruence between the two, which is why we have the efforts we have in trying to recruit.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but retention, retention is an issue, we've looked at various things, having coffees within the school year for our teachers of color. Those have had mixed reviews, and sometimes people don't come, they're busy, we've had more people from the diversity committee than we've had sometimes the staff. But I think one of the things that we work on is certainly the social-emotional climate of our schools, a robust mentoring program, and just raising that conscious of what a welcoming school is. But on the other hand, we are more competitive than we used to be in terms of salaries, but we are still not as competitive as some of our surrounding communities, for sure.
Well, and I know this is a problem that all districts are having.
All districts are.
We are not unique in this at all.
No, we're not.
And as a matter of fact, it would be interesting, even at that high level, to understand what other, even if we just used the ones that we normally compare ourselves to, it'd be interesting, even at that high level, if we know that we are, you know, 75 percent, 85 percent in Arlington, well, what does it look like in Belmont? What does it look like? You know, at some point, it would be interesting just to know, because I think it's important for people to understand, we're trying very hard, but this is a real problem, and we're not, we're not unique in our position. I don't want people to think that we're not trying, and I know we're trying, I've been to those coffees, I know, I know that it's hard to find those people.
Mr. Spiegel, would that be easy to get, do you think?
From the other.
From the other districts?
I could request it, we'll see.
Yeah, just so we could, you know, even if we just do the town manager.
Town measure 12 communities, right?
Yeah, I may could try. I'm sorry, I just lost my thought, I was going to, something.
Well, maybe we're thinking the same thing. One of the things that is a challenge for all districts is that only 13 percent of the students in teacher preparation programs are professionals of culture. And so, right away, that is not many people that are being trained to be teachers.
Right, right.
Which is why we, as a district, supported that, you know, today's students tomorrow's teachers, because this was the sort of a long-term approach to how we're going to change the course of that. And hopefully, that still will, we'll see.
At some point.
At some point resurrect itself.
And as, as you know, we're members of the MPDE, and we host, we, last Friday, the MPDE hosted a very interesting and successful day-long conference, touching on the topics that all, school districts are grappling with in this area, and had presentations. and had presentations by Claude Steele, who was fascinating, talking about bias and stereotype threats and his, his research, how, how that works in, for minority populations in whatever the minority is in different situations. And John Saffier spoke and he was great and other panelists and Dr. Bodie was also part of a panel. And it was just, you know, there was so much to cover and the day went really fast with, because there was so, so much to talk about and go, what's going on throughout the state. And people from the Department of Education and, and Leslie University and people really brought their perspectives on, on, on this, this issue that, in terms of just making our profession, the education profession, more diverse and welcoming for everybody. And I think a lot of professions, a lot of industries, a lot of different, all across societies are grappling with the same, same issues and almost no matter what field you're in. I did want to say, speaking of the coffees, we did hire a couple of the new teachers had come to the Coffee Social in the spring. So, we were able to sort of follow up and principals did follow up with those, some of those candidates who matched openings that we had. So, it did work for a couple of people who, who came and we were able to do that.
Yes, Mr. Hainer.
Something I just noticed in this, from 2014 to 2015, there's, we hired a hundred and thirty teachers. From 2015 to 2014, we lost forty-six teachers. Is, that's something we should be, excuse me, staff. I realize it's not just staff, but it is staff. We had that large increase and then decrease. Is, I guess my question is, is that budgetary? Is it programs that we're not continuing? Or is it something we should be concerned with from fourteen to fifteen?
This is probably, this is a question about general staff, right? Overall staff.
These are pretty big numbers. I'm just concerned.
And we've increased our student.
We added a hundred and four, a hundred and thirty from fourteen to fifteen on the total staff and then dropped forty-six from fifteen. I'm looking at the.
Yeah, I know, I see what you mean. And I.
I'm just, I, if this is something, I'm not looking for a specific answer right now. I'm just concerned, if it's budgetary, budgetary, we need to know about it and decide how we're going to allocate the money.
I don't think it's budgetary. I think there were some, I know there were some positions that were, we just finalized a hire today for a position that was vacant. So, we've had some vacancies. I don't think that explains all the difference. I'd have to look. There's also substitute teachers is.
That's listed in these numbers as well.
Are incorporating these numbers and the substitute numbers fluctuate greatly. And so.
Substitute, you're including a full-time substitutes. They're not the day-to-day ones.
No, we include the day-to-day ones as new hires, yeah.
Okay.
Because they're on our staff. They're hired. We take their, we get their data. So, and some substitutes who haven't been working, we've taken off of our roles.
As a person who is substituted, some years I'll be in two or three days a week, other years, two or three times a year.
Yeah.
If I was a minority, would you be?
If you didn't work all.
Right. Where do you, do, do I automatically get counted if I shop?
You would get counted if you're, unless you're inactive for several months, then we would deactivate you. But if you are working periodically as a substitute, we would.
So, you wouldn't get counted if you've maybe worked one day the past year or something? It sounds like you wouldn't.
Depends when.
Okay. And it was months ago.
This is not a reflection on you, but I think that's important for us to understand. Maybe, maybe a slight break. How many of the, the staff would be considered substitutes? Just to put it in perspective, that's all.
Dr. Allison Happy.
Mr. Spiegel, I remember you spoke in another meeting that you do exit interviews for departing staff. And I wonder if you've gleaned anything from the more diverse staff in terms of what, you know, why are they leaving? What are the needs that we weren't meeting?
You know, for different reasons, but there's no one common denominator for why, common reason for why staff are leaving. And our diverse staff who've left have different reasons for leaving. You know, I, you know, obviously, not everybody who we hire, and I've said this before, is in what they feel is the right job for them. Sometimes it's, we don't feel it's the right job for them. And, and sometimes, you know, they're looking for different opportunities. Sometimes, you know, sometimes that really, they're, they're looking for a different type of working environment. People and across the board, people who have left, no matter what race they are, you know, variety of reasons. A few people, it's more money. A lot of people, it's because they are moving or they have a spouse or partner who's been, who is being transferred elsewhere and they're moving out of state. And they wouldn't have left otherwise. Other people, you know, some people aren't looking for other opportunities, but other opportunities find them and they have a hard time saying no. I mean, there's every reason that people leave. And obviously, there are some people who are dissatisfied and we try to, we would like to minimize the number of people who are leaving because they're dissatisfied.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Schlickman.
Yeah, I would definitely, you know, I'm doing the day-to-dash word for LOL. We pulled, have you seen the Boston dashboard on their diversity?
I think I've looked at it.
Yeah, it's quite interesting. And you've got a slidey thing based on year of hire and you can mark off by classification. So, you know, people in the district can readily look at how we're doing in various categories and it's really quite cool. I, I agree. I'd like to have the per diem subs out of the report or categorized differently because that's a totally different kettle of fish. The opportunity for a student to interact with somebody on a day-to-day basis, even if it's a long-term sub basis, that's fine, but the per diems just, to me, don't really warrant inclusion in a report such as this. Yeah, that's, the one thing I did notice is the attrition rate. And if you've got per diem subs in there, that could certainly influence that. And I guess everybody's asked about our, what we're doing to look at, look at attrition among people we value in the district. So, if anything comes forward that might help us to retain people that's systemic enough to bring it to us, you know, we definitely want to hear about it.
Sure.
So, I just have a question about that. So, is the attrition in those categories of jobs that we normally get attrition, no matter which, you know, group they're, they're put into? Or is it, so that I know that, for example, a sub or a aide, there's just much higher attrition rate?
There's much higher attrition.
Right.
I, I will say, there was more, I think I mentioned this once in a previous report. There was more attrition this year among our teaching staff.
Among teaching staff, okay.
And people in that, in the AEA bargaining, Unit A bargaining unit.
Got it.
For various reasons. There were more people who were, you know, had spouses transferred out of state. I mean, it just seemed like there were several people who fell in that category. I mean, and there were just a lot of different reasons.
Including people of diverse backgrounds, yeah. I mean.
I think so. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I have to think, yeah.
Yeah.
And we had a couple of people that, you know, reduced their hour, hour and a half commute to, you know, fifteen minutes.
Right. That's the other thing. We had some people with long commutes who really, who decided that for family reasons or whatever, they needed to have shorter commutes. So.
Okay, great. Thanks, Mr. Hainer.
Percentage in people that come in, like first-year teachers, second-year teachers and then leave? I guess.
From this past year or?
All I can remember is I would, when I needed a jo, I took a job no matter where. And I lived in Allen and it was a forty-minute ride northwest. Once I had the job, if I hadn't moved out there, I would have had the experience on my resume and I would have been able to be more selective of where I went. I didn't know if that was a factor as well. I know we were a great training ground for a lot of different people in our system.
Yeah, I don't think that was a huge factor. There were a couple of people who were newer employees who left to do other things, to not teach anymore, actually. So, we had a couple of people who left the teaching profession.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, Dr. Chesson, State Accountability Data Report and Analysis.
Okay. I guess I can do it. There we go.
Yeah, we probably should turn the light down.
No, I think we should turn it down a little. So, again, as we do each year, we'll talk just very briefly about the components of accountability. Talk about the accountability results for this year and our plans to move forward. Before we go any further, one of the things I need to say that it's very unique about this year is that we, with the school committee's approval, took the park this year. In order to get accountability numbers, because as you may remember, we use data from previous years on a weighted average to get that. Because those years were MCAS years and this was a PARK year, the state did a crosswalk where they took what the student got in PARK and they translated that into what they would have gotten in MCAS. PARK has five ratings. MCAS only has four. In some cases, the top of the three became what we would call proficient.
Okay.
The top of the middle range became into the proficient. And in some cases, the bottom of the four became needs improvement. And, and I say that just to let you know that there's a lot of manipulation of data and statistics that's going around here. So, for me, these are of interest, but they are not nearly as critical as they have been in the past years because they did a lot of manipulation of data in order to get our accountability ratings this year.
Do you have a sense of, is it math is one way and?
It varied from year to year and from test to test.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Hainer.
Question of reliability from your professional opinion on this. I mean, what you just said to me said, "I feel that this is more political to do this." And going forward, until we get a hundred percent PARK, I really question fiddling around, trying to make an apple fit in an orange skin.
Well, I have to say that as we look at the data, there was only, there were only one set of results that surprised us as a, as a curriculum team. I would say the rest of the data was pretty much what we expected. So, in terms of reliability, I guess I would want, if I understood better why the one school's data surprised me so much, and that's something we're going to be working on throughout the next couple of months, then I would be able to answer that question better.
Are you able to get information to break the questions down or look at the curriculum? It's the way you could with the MCAS?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay, so until you get that.
And, and we will not get that. We've already been told.
It's very hard to make that.
So, that's what I want to say. We, we sort of take this with a grain of salt. It gives us some indication of where we will stand. Remember that the next test will be MCAS 2.0. It will not be PARK.
Will we be able to analyze the test or is that still going to be verboten?
Let's wait.
All right.
On future questions.
That's, yeah, there's so many variables at this point.
But actually, it might be helpful to remind the public about what this year was supposed to be, that it was sort of an experimental year, that we knew that we'd, we wouldn't have results that would look, that would help us as much and that we were sort of playing with this.
Right, that's exactly correct.
And that's why we decided to hold everything harmless.
Yes, that's correct.
I make one comment too, that it's not as though if you took MCAS, you're going to get any better data this year.
Right.
In part because the sample communities was so small. What was it, twenty-five percent?
Yeah.
That, that the data there is not that helpful.
Calculating comparables for anything this year.
So, the state did is not, we cannot compare ourselves against the state this year.
But you'd still be able, if, to look at the questions and stuff and analyze against what your performance. Is this something we put, we strengthen and stuff?
Well, they will give you the questions, but you don't know where your school stood on the answers to those questions. So, I don't know if twenty-five percent of my kids got it right or twenty-five percent of my kids got it wrong. They're not giving us that information.
And even, even if you were to, we were to have chosen MCAS, is that your question?
I guess what I'm going to ask, what's the value of the test if you're not finding out how your school?
Well, if you remember, this was an experimental year.
I thought I understood you that even in the future we won't.
Oh, no, in the future, the future's yet to be seen.
We want to get into details, but big picture questions, comments?
Okay, the big picture is this, you know, the compared to what on individual questions is tough because there's error, but the real strength comes from grouping similar questions together. And that's sort of the diagnostic that if you're doing it well, you're using. You can't do that this year, regardless of where you are, because even if you have the MCAS, you don't have the compared to what. You don't have reliable statewide sample. So, you can't see how you're doing an open response vis a vis the rest of the state or the key content areas that you're worried about. So, no matter how you're doing it, you're not going to get there. You still have your growth scores. You can take a look at your student growth scores. They were all calculated similarly. You know, that, that's still a pretty valid measure. And I think the concordance, MCAS scores across the park is giving you a pretty reliable sense of how things are going statewide because it's based on a statewide sample. And if your numbers move a little bit, yeah, that could be a test effect. If they're moving substantively, there might be something else going on.
Right, right.
So, you know, there, there are things you can spot, not to the degree that you, you would normally see, but it's, you know, worth looking at the data and thinking about for a few minutes.
Sure. Okay. Dr. Allison Happy, big picture type of.
I'll ask at the end.
Okay.
Okay, so there are three components to what we call the Progress and Performance Index, which is the PPI that we hear all about. One is achievement or closing the achievement gap. That's the CPI. One is what Mr. Schlickman just alluded to, which is the student growth percentile. And then, at the high school level, we have dropout and graduation rates. Our schools continue to be high-performing schools and high-performing schools have challenged maintaining high growth. Our schools continue to have high percentile rankings. And this is one of the first times we're going to show you what that is across the board. So, you can see that sometimes a school have not a PPI that didn't hit the target, but they're in a very high percentile. So, I wanted to take a look at that. And then, I guess we said, "This is the first year for a major shift in the testing format." So, this is easier seen if you have it in front of you than it is. However, the visual I want to make here is that the yellows are things that are below the targets. So, for example, the first set of yellows that you see there are for school accountability and assistance level. And you will see which schools are level one. Those are white. And then, in what years each school were level two. So, for example, Bishop was a level one in 2013, 2014. It became a level-two school in 2015, which was the first year it had sufficient number of students to have its subgroups counted. And then, it was a level-two in 2016. Then you'll notice the next set of data is about the cumulative PPI and the target for schools to be level-one is seventy-five. This is for all students. You'll see that in, this is from 2013 to 2016. And you'll see that in 2016, we had two schools that for all students were below the seventy-five target, one being Dallin and the second one being Thompson. And then, the third set of data that you see here is cumulative PPI for our high-need students. And the ones that are yellow are the ones that are below the seventy-five PPI target. And then, the last set of data is data that we have not shared regularly and that, and not because we were holding it back, but just because it was not part of the presentation. But we wanted to include it this year, which is the school percentile within school type. So, for example, Bishop has a seventy-one PPI for its high-need students and a hundred PPI for its all students. And, but you'll see that it's in this ninety-fourth percentile. So, even though it's not making the seventy-five PPI, it's ranked very high compared to other comparable schools. So, we just kind of wanted to say that that's an indicator that the school is doing well. And then, there's just an area that we need to continue to focus on.
Quick question?
Yep.
Yeah, Mr. Hainer.
Down below where the Audison and the high school were both level-one schools listed last year and now they're level-two. If you go over to the third column, I'm misunderstanding it. They both have the aster, the single asterisks and saying that they're not going to be harmed by, by the PARK. Now, I know they didn't take the PARK. I don't know why they're listed in this.
Well, that, actually, Audison did take the PARK.
So, if they were held harmless under PARK, why did they?
Okay, and I'm going to, I'm going to get to that.
Oh, sorry.
Can I ask if you could?
Great, okay.
At the end of column four.
Preview of coming attractions. So, here we go. This is the chart that you're used to seeing that shows you for each of the schools and for the district for 2014, 2015, and 2016. And you'll notice that, as Mr. Hainer just alluded to, there are asterisks by some of the schools. Dallin had a seventy-one PPI for its high-need students. Normally, that would mean that that school would have moved down to level-two. But because we decided to take the PARK this year, they were held harmless. So, they remained at level-one. Audison, on the other hand, had a seventy-three PPI for its, sorry, sixty-one PPI for its. Audison, on the other hand, had a 73 PPI for its, sorry, 61 PPI for its high need students and a 73 PPI for all of its students. And they actually weren't held harmless and that is because you could be held harmless for your scores, but you could not be held harmless for your participation rates. And this is something that we've talked about prior. So in order to be a level one school, you must have 95% of all of your students and 95% of your subgroups that have 20 or more students participate in the test. When you have a very small subgroup such as special education, if one or two students, usually two, would pop you over, you can fall below that 95% threshold. And that means that the highest level that you can be is level two. We have submitted, as we have had to do the last two years for the high school, submitted an appeal for Audison because we felt that the two students that were not counted in our participation rate, they're not taking the test was out of our control. And I'm waiting from the Department of Education to rule on that. Also for the high school, even though they have sufficient PPI at both the high needs and the all PPI to qualify for this level one, they also had a number of students who have been, who were hospitalized either at the time of testing or just prior to the time of testing. And so that caused one of their subgroups to fall below the 95% percentile threshold. And so I also have an appeal into the Department of Education because we felt that that was beyond our control.
Thank you.
Does that explain?
Excellent.
Mr. Silliman?
Yeah, I know for the Audison, it was 95% participation for your ELA in math and 94% on science, which is only in two grades. So that, oh, for you, it's one grade, yeah. I'm, pardon me.
Because you have five through eight.
We're a five through eight system. So it's only one grade, so that it's a third of the population is generating the denominator for your numerator. So that's really a sensitive thing for such a small subgroup. So it does seem unfair to knock the school down a level based on one test and one grade.
Okay, yes, Dr. Allison.
Two questions. One, so was our, not the subgroup, but what was our overall participation for Audison and for AHS? I mean, for the?
Mr. Schlickman, I believe, just said 95%.
That was for the sped, but for everybody else, the participation rate would have been, for all students, participation rate was 98, 98 for ELA and math, 97 for science. For the high need subgroup, it would have been 96, 96, 95 for science.
Okay. So, yeah. Then the other thing is, I think there's a typo on brackets level on that chart.
Oh, I'm sorry. They should have been a level one. Yes, yes, thank you. I didn't catch that. Thank you for pointing that out.
Yes, Mr.?
So I think that really, the thing that disturbs me the most is that our PPI level at the high school has gone down at least seven points a year. And that's disturbing. So we went from 90 to 83 to 79, right? So we've had a seven number drop, then we had four drop. Like, we are, I mean, 79 is nothing to be proud of. So that is really concerning to me. The trend there is that our PPI, we started pretty high and we are not looking very good.
Well, no.
Same with Audison.
Well, no, it's not quite, it's not quite true. What happened was, is our PPIs for 2013, 2015, and 2016 were in the 70s. It was 71 in 2013, 71 in 2014. But in terms of the annual PPI.
Yeah, that's what this is, all PPI.
That's the cumulative, okay? And what happens is in 2014, we had 104 points. And this is weighted. So on the year you get it, that 104 is worth 40% of your score. The subsequent years, the 104 is worth 30%. This year is worth 20% and that's going to drop to 10% of your overall. And it's being averaged in with a 71, 71, and a 75. Because of the weight of that 104 is declining, that's what's causing the score to, the cumulative score, which is a cumulative based on four years to decline.
So, okay, so this, this number reflects a three-year average?
It's a four-year average, a four-year rated average. 40% the most recent year, 30 of the previous, 20 the previous, and 10 for the fourth year out.
Are you then saying that Ms. Stark's point about that we seem to be declining isn't quite right?
No, it isn't quite right. We had a spike in 2014. And if you look at 13, 15, and 16, they're pretty consistent in the 70s.
So then rather than declining, we just had a one-year spike?
We had one-year spike. The other three years were pretty consistent.
When I come back to present the MCAS and park results, I will make sure that I show you what the annual PPI is so you can take a look at that.
And the issue was, is we had a whole bunch of extra credit points in 2014 because that was just a really great year for us.
Cutting back on the students at the failing and increasing the students at the advanced.
Yeah.
Is this your chart that you've created or is this from Desi?
No, I created this.
What I'm concerned with is when a parent or somebody goes to Desi and looks at these things without your knowledge.
Right. I don't have anything. It just looks bad.
People make quantum leaps and it's very, it's high-level math to really look at this and give it true value and not, look at this and see what Ms. Stark just saw, drop, drop, drop. And they're not necessarily clear themselves, but I'm not knocking you. I just want?
No, 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 I understand. It's just that the accountability rating is based on a cumulative PPI, not your annual PPI. Folks at home, if they're so inclined, can actually go and see the annual PPI. All the data is out on the Department of Education website and it's available to everyone. But I will bring you a chart back that shows annual PPI over time for the next time.
Thank you.
Great. Oh, yeah, sorry, Mr. Carden.
Maybe you're going to get to this, but is the Dallin drop noticeable? Is that the one thing you were talking about?
That's the one school that I was surprised at the results. So our overall trend in the data reflecting progress in closing the achievement gap at the elementary school levels where students and scheduling and staffing allow for consistent intervention services and coaching, we're seeing a positive trend in the PPI for high need students because that's, you know, definitely the one that we want to take a look at. At the secondary level, that, and that's why I want to go back and show you the actual data because we really feel that, and if you notice this, from the cumulative PPI for high need students at the high school level was actually higher than the cumulative PPI for all students. And so we feel that at the high school level, that's where we get the most consistent scheduling of interventions for high need students because they can put it in their schedule, it's blocked out, it doesn't get taken away unless there's some kind of assembly or something. As Ms. Higgins, I sure will, will just, will agree with me is that at the elementary school level, it is extraordinarily difficult to get students all the interventions that they need. It's also difficult at the middle school, but even they have blocks of time in their day. At the elementary school, it is very, very difficult to get all the interventions that we might want to give to a student that's a high need student. So these are the individual schools and the reasons behind their results. So Bishop, again, the reason that they're a level two school is they're high need students. If you remember, their cumulative PPI was 71. We saw an improvement in closing the achievement gap and they met their growth, but they had no bonus for failing or advanced. Mr. Carden just asked about Dallin. I'm going to get to Dallin in a minute. But just because I happen to know this off the top of my head, Dallin had two students, two, that were not proficient in one of the grade levels. If you want to get, you have to get 10% of your students out of failing in order to get a bonus. When you have two students to get 10% of that is, it's very tough, okay? So oftentimes when we see that schools are not getting their bonus, it's not because they're not doing a good job. It's because to get that 10% bonus, you really have to, you know, have a major effort. That's, so that's English Language Arts and Math. We, again, didn't see a bonus, but we saw a good CPI and SGP. We're piloting a piece of software called iReady for literacy to improve the information that we get about comprehensive skills development at the, at the fourth and fifth grade level at Bishop. And we're working with math and literacy coaches on a regular basis. So those are the things that we'll be doing to try to hopefully bring that 71 to 75 for the next year. Hardy, again, is a level two school because of their high need students. We also saw improvement in closing the achievement gap in their growth percentile at ELA, but again, no bonus, again, very difficult to do. We saw an improvement in their CPI in math. Their SGP remained flat. We're going to continue our Title I tutor there. We're going to focus on data analysis. We'll be reflected in changes in instruction, including we'll be piloting a Fuentes and Pennell comprehensive assessment, comprehension assessment. So you'll be seeing that we're piloting two assessments this year. One is iReady, which is online, and one is Fuentes and Pennell, which is being done manually to provide more progress monitoring for students who are getting interventions. Pierce, again, high need students, they met their target CPI and SGP in ELA, but did not receive bonus points. In math, they met their target CPI and SGP, but no bonus points. We're going to continue our Title I tutor in math there. We're piloting iReady for math to provide better progress monitoring for those students. At Thompson, the cumulative PPI was below the target for both all and high need students. They had a low slowing of the achievement gap, but they did have improved SGP in ELA. They had some improved closing of the achievement gap in math and some improvement in growth. Again, no bonus. We will continue our Title I tutor in math in ELA and professional development for grades three through five will focus on high need students. Stratton, again, it was the high need student group that was below the target. We saw improved CPI and improved growth, again, no bonus. We saw low achievement gap closing in math. And so we will be, we added a Title I tutor for math support and we'll be piloting Fuentes and Pennell comprehension assessment for ELA. If we look to Dallin, they missed the target in both all students and high needs. There was no movement in closing the achievement gap and they had a low growth. But again, we're talking about a school that has very, very high performance, so it's a lot harder to show those things. And they got no bonus in either group. And in math, there was no movement in closing the achievement gap and they had a low growth. We're increasing the coaching in math and literacy. We're going to focus on data analysis that will be reflected in changes in instruction, including pilot the Fuentes-Pennell comprehensive assessment, comprehension assessment. And finally, in Audison, all students and high need students in both areas, they had low closing of the achievement gap and little or no growth, and they had no bonus. And the same, pretty much the same thing exists for math. We're piloting iReady actually at the middle school for students in the math support classes to improve progress monitoring and intervention, and we have an increased use of data in ELA. So these are the specific actions that were going to be taken. And there's not the only actions, but these are the areas that the curriculum team felt would get the most bang for the buck. And now, if you remember, I talked about in this slide right here, that those schools where we're seeing our ability to provide consistent intervention services and coaching are showing positive growth and trends and for our high need students. And if you were to look at this detailed chart, you'll see that Pierce met their CPI and their SGP target in ELA and they met their CPI and their SGP target in math. And that's the school that's probably the easiest to make sure that students consistently get their interventions because there's only two teachers in each grade. And so it's very, it's much easier to work the scheduling out.
Dr. Allison, I had a question.
I'm wondering if any of the results specifically Audison had to do with the fact that they took electronic, they took park via electronic testing or that was what I remember.
They did take it online. I can only, since I don't really have anything to compare it to because they all took it online, I can go back to Bishop. And if I look at Bishop's results compared to, they were the only school that took it online at the elementary level and I look at the other schools, I see no difference in their results. Nor when we did the surveys for students and teachers, we saw students, you know, really saying that they were comfortable with it. A little bit less in third grade in terms of doing it online than the fourth and fifth grade. One of the things that we've done this year is to increase the amount of time that students have access to what we call KidBlog so that they get more comfortable responding to online questions. And that's because all fourth graders will be taking the test online this year across the district. And so there was, the teachers at the Bishop felt that their fourth and fifth grade students felt the most comfortable because they had spent a lot of time composing essays and short answer questions using KidBlog. So we've expanded that across the district this year. So in terms of Audison, I really don't have anything to compare it to. I don't have a sort of control group, so.
Yes, Mr. Thielman?
So could you just talk a little bit about the discussions you might have had with teachers and principals about the results, how you impact the results and whether or not they're significant enough to change instruction or have conversations about changing instruction or they're not, or what do you think?
I actually said at the beginning that I don't think, I think that we need to look at this. We need to think about it. We need to look at others. So for example, for Dallin, I want to compare those results against writing samples that we're doing now in the fall. So to look at kids that may not have scored well in literacy and look at their writing samples that we're getting for them, look at their DRA scores, look at the math assessments that we're doing to see whether, I think that, you know, we really sold people that we were trying out the test.
Yeah.
And there's a, there was a varying response from school to school in test prep. And, and we really didn't want people to prepare too much. So I think that they took us at our word. They tested the test. They made sure the kids were comfortable with it. We did not have any reports of any students actually across the district being uncomfortable. But I've, I feel like that because of the way we approached it, that it's really hard to really take it with less than a grain of salt. I feel like we, it gives us an indicator. We're going to look at other measures to see whether this is something we should be concerned about or not concerned about. But we've also put things in place to provide us with more data.
So it's just, it's maybe a year from now, this kind of data might change, cause you to change practice?
Yes, but right now I would say no.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Hainer?
You included Dallin in the, in this chart here because of the PPI numbers that came out?
Yes, they were held harmless, so that's why.
Well, and if they weren't held harmless and those numbers came out that way, they would have been a level two.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Silliman?
I know there's a decision point coming up now as to go to paper or electronic for the rest of the district. What's been the thinking?
We have chosen to have all of, well, Bishop did it all online last year and they will continue to do so. Pierce, because it's a small school and it's easy to support with the number of tech support people we have, will also be taking it online. Audison took it online. They'll continue to take it online. And fourth graders across the district will take it online. That's what the state expectation was, and so we feel like we're prepared to meet that expectation. I think we'll, we'll see how the tech support goes this year. The state is asking for only fifth grade to be added next year. I mean, once we add fourth and fifth grade, actually, to be honest, I have principals that are like, do it all online. Teachers at Bishop, when we got the new iReady assessment, they were like, as long as it's online, signing up. They just really felt like the online handling of the paperwork and the testing and everything was much, much smoother. And we had a number of issues with, you know, what were you supposed to send back? What weren't you supposed to send back? That we would be a lot better off across the district without a lot of paper.
Just, just as a point that, and it sort of surprised me. There was a widespread opinion upon our principals and law that we should do everything online this year. We have the technical capacity in terms of the servers and it's giving everybody a head start towards it. So it was a bit of a surprise for me to see that kind of a ground swell, but it makes a lot of sense.
And I think we would have done that. We have the bandwidth. We have the devices. That's not the issue. The issue is? The issue is that we want to put tech support people in each building. Excuse me, for the first time that people are doing the testing, and we just don't have enough people to go around.
That's going to be an issue for.
Yeah, the budget.
Budget.
Okay, yeah, that, 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 that does it. We've got a bunch of part-time people we can deploy.
Yeah, I, one of the feedbacks I've heard is that some really valuable people were sort of put in the role of tech support, because we, we could use them, but they, they could be doing other things and should, you know.
So, um, if we look at other assistance plans, we now have district-wide elementary, um, literacy and math websites with exemplar videos that are made available for all teachers. Um, this includes models of data analysis which impact instruction. So we're making a video of one of our literacy coaches, um, doing a DRA score with a student, and then talking about how you can break down pieces of that DRA score to help instruction in the classroom. Um, we also have, um, teachers that are, um, making videos about different bends in Lucy Colkins, and a teacher can actually watch it and then do the bend the next day. So, um, we're going to deepen our coaching model and try to increase our consistency. And you're going to find, as Dr. Bodie just alluded to, that our budget request for twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, um, at least in the curriculum director's opinion, um, will focus on items necessary to provide consistent support for high-need students and their teachers across the district.
Uh, other questions? I have, I have one more question. So in the, um, the plans, there seems to be a wide variety of, of, of things that we're planning to do, depending on the school. And I'm just wondering why in certain cases do we do iReady for literacy but not for math? And, you know, what's a decision point there? Is it just based on the numbers, or is there some other?
Well, some, in some cases, it's based on what we saw in the results. Um, but we're piloting iReady at two schools to try to decide whether it's giving us the kind of information that we really want. It's not expensive, but it's not cheap.
Right, okay.
And so we want to make sure that the data that we're getting from it, um, it's an adaptive test. So if a student starts the test and they're doing really, really well, then the questions get harder. If the student starts the test and they're having difficulty, then the questions will get a little bit easier. So you can test and get a really good snapshot of a student in a much shorter amount of time. Um, but we want to make sure that it is going to get us the kind of information that is helpful to, um, improve instruction, because if it's not, then it doesn't make any difference if it costs ten cents. You know, if it does, then it's worth the investment.
Good, thanks. Uh, Dr. Austin Epi.
I had two questions. First, um, these pilots, will we get to hear the results of them sometime later in the year, or maybe early next year?
Um, yeah, I would say sometime in the middle of the spring, because we need to do two or three testing cycles, so we won't have that, those results until sometime in the springtime.
Okay, and then?
The one thing I, oh, go ahead.
Yes.
The, I was going to loop back to the question I had at the start, which was, if I understood correctly, Dr. Chesson said that we didn't, the teachers don't get the results of the questions?
They don't get, they don't get what's called item analysis, so they don't find out how their students did on a specific question. However, they do, for, for example, for our literacy, they get to find out where their students stood on a group of questions that would be regarding an informational text, a group of questions that would be on literary analysis, and a group of questions that would be on vocabulary. That's the closest thing we're going to get towards.
I guess, I'm, I just got my, um, my child's part thing in the mail today, so I just glanced at it. But it had results for questions which were released. I mean, it had the answer that she had put, which was not the correct answer on some of them.
Was that the science test?
No.
Maybe it was, actually.
I was going to say. The science was MCAS, and they released that information.
I was like, I didn't see that.
I was going to say.
Yeah, no, okay, nevermind, my mistake.
It's Dr. Bodie.
Uh, well, we're doing iReady, which is an adaptive test. One of the things that, um, I've come to understand is that the new MCAS two-point-zero will not be adaptive. It's going to be a fixed, it's going to be a fixed-form test. So, but we still want to do the, the iReady in terms of having another touch point for just seeing what the progress students are making, particularly the students that we are, we, we really wanted to monitor.
Do we have any more information about MCAS two-point-zero in terms of whether it would be timed, or?
It's untimed.
It's going to be untimed. We know that, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I think, uh, any more questions, comments? And so, uh, superintendent's report.
All right, um, a number of things, and some of them are very much related, uh, to each other. Let me start with, uh, the, the, these were put in, uh, in order before we, thinking about and which makes more sense to be talked about. As you know, October nineteenth is the day of the special town meeting. And while the capacity to, uh, borrow money for a Thompson addition, uh, was, was approved in June, we still have to go before a town meeting and ask for appropriation. Now, what we decided at the school enrollment task force last year was to make that decision this year after looking at enrollment Thompson. And, and basically, it really came down to, uh, one litmus test. Now, what was the projection for the enrollment this year? And would we meet that expectation, or would we not, or exceed it? And that the, the enrollment projection, I think, was four-forty-eight, and we have exceeded it, four-sixty-five. So, I mean, that alone was the, the information the school enrollment, enrollment task force wanted to know in order to, um, make their recommendation that we go ahead with the Thompson addition. When you look into the, Dr. McKibben's August forecast, which is just using our summer numbers, and you look out the next ten years or more, in fact, it's a fifteen-year projection. Now, Thompson for the foreseeable future are going to have kindergarten class sizes around eighty or more. And that's going to be for kindergartens. So, as we, as we, as that, that group of four keeps moving through the school, we're going to need additional classrooms. Right now, our fifth grade, there is two, and our, and so, and the last year's was two. So as that two moves out and four moves in, you can see what the effect is going to be. So that is going, the recommendation had been to meet at the school enrollment task force to go forward with the Thompson addition. They have endorsed that recommendation, which will be, uh, presented by Mr. Chaplin at the, uh, nineteenth meeting. Another warrant article that was, um, was put in as a placeholder was the warrant article for modulars at, um, Audison next year. And we've discussed some of my reasoning, and actually, it's not even just my reasoning, it's the, it was the reasoning of the administrators and, um, other people at Audison in terms of what to do next year. Clearly, the school is tight, very tight. And where they really see it at Audison is in the corridors, you know, in the cafeteria. We, this, this particular, this particular summer, we are, I should, let me back up even a little further, the school committee supported adding a half cluster to Audison this year. So we're going to have three full clusters and a half cluster at each level. So we had to do a lot of construction this summer to make this work. And there were a lot of people that had to move, programs moved. It was actually quite, quite significant amount of moving that occurred at the school in order to be able to accommodate the increased enrollment this year. So, the bottom line of this is that while we know that it's still going to be tight next year, and we're expecting another forty students dispersed over the three grades, it didn't make sense to add modulars next year. Doesn't mean that Audison couldn't use modulars, but it's, it would be only for one year. If we were not looking at Gibbs, this is the, this next year would be the beginning of starting to add modular classrooms until we had eight or ten modulars at Audison over the next couple of years to deal with enrollment growth. But the feeling of administration was that, given all the work that went into the summer to, to make sure it would work in terms of space, with very high utilization, some rooms are utilized a hundred percent of the day. You know, some, I don't think any of them are pretty much, much under eighty-five percent, which is an MSBA requirement, in their projections. So at any rate, you've got, we're using high utilization, we did a massive amount of construction, a schedule was created that, that actually worked quite well this fall. And an additional issue about next year is that if any modulars we put on the upper parking lot would reduce parking. And that is a big problem. As we've increased the number of staffing there to meet enrollment growth, the, the crunch for parking has only gotten worse. So if we put even a modular up there, we'd probably reduce a modular or two, we'd probably reduce the parking by half. So there was a lot of reasons why, you know, the decision was made, uh, to not go forward, including one other, and that is, when you put a modular at a school, we saw this at Thompson, it takes a lot of time on the part of administration. It would take a lot of time just in terms of physically, you know, having it all work. But then it would mean you have to again, adjust, move people into the modular, and would have this domino effect on the rest of the school. They would rather put the time and energy into planning for Gibbs, rather than, you know, adjusting the schedule and everything one more time for one year. So, I, I wanted to say this, because I think a lot of people are confused, because, and in fact, I've had some parents say, well, you thought, you said that we really need a lot of modulars next year. We didn't need eight or ten next year, but we certainly could have used, you know, two or four, uh, depending on what, how you did the programming. But, um, we made a decision as a town to go forward with Gibbs, and I think that, in the interest of cost and all these other reasons I've given, we will adjust next year, make it work, and, uh, put our time and energy into all the planning for Gibbs. And so that article will, will have no action on it at town meeting. I don't know if anybody wants to comment or go on before I?
Yes, Mr. Thielman.
The articles at town meeting, the impact of schools are just?
Two.
Thompson and Thompson.
Just Thompson, that's it.
And, yeah, then, no, no.
And then that's it.
The last article has to do with, um, medic, marijuana dispensaries in terms of how many feet away from a school they can be. It hasn't really.
There's also a zoning article that may dominate for two nights.
No, I'm, I'm aware of that. But I'm talking, it's just those two. But the school committee's not involved in any other.
No, no.
That's, that's.
That's it, that's it.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Rayner, yes.
With regard to Hardy, uh, the, the need for extra space and things of that nature, there was some talk, uh, at the enrollment task force meeting, it, it, we didn't, there was no decision, there wasn't much talk. But to take action, how, the space needs there are going to happen next September, am I correct?
We need one more classroom next year.
So in order to get that, unless somebody magically finds something, we're going to have to go to the town for some money or take it out of our own, our own coffers. How do you see, I mean, you, you put down in your report, it needs more study, but we're in a time crunch to have everything in place for September next year. That's all, I'm, my concern about.
Um, the principal and I have a Plan A and a Plan B to deal with the one classroom for next year. But beyond that, we have to have modulars classrooms there.
And I would recommend as soon as possible, we start talking about it in enrollment task force.
Right, could you tell us a plan about what, um, when things would need to be studied, when, you know, we'd need to go to a meeting for various things?
I, I think that we would need to begin the planning this year, for sure, because it's just the way the calendar works. We're, uh, the director of facilities and I have been looking at ways that, what would be the best thing to do in terms of acquiring modulars? But the lead time on that, you know, we would, we'd probably want to be going out looking for modulars next fall. So you just keep backing these things up, and, and then there's the, the issue of cost. Perhaps what we might want to do is by spring town meeting, being able to?
Make requests.
Make a request for that.
So we need to really be thinking seriously about it right now, because the warrant's going to be published in two months.
Right, and it's closed.
I mean, the time crunch is real short, so, I, I mean.
We'll put a placeholder in, for sure.
Well, not only that, but we need, we need, we've done a good job getting the enrollment task force, uh, on board for everything, our requests, so.
Dr. Austin Epi.
Can we shift any of the modulars that are at Stratton anywhere, once they're done?
That's possible. We've, you know, we've always thought about that as a possibility. It's, it's whatever the, the cost would be, it's possible to do that, yes.
I'm just thinking, then there's no headway for building them, or?
But it's not clear that that's the most cost-effective way to do it.
No, I'm just saying, it, it gets rid of some of the time, you know, some of the preparation.
At least they're here. You still got to build them up and, you know, attach them and all that.
They're here.
But at least they're here, right? You just have to move them.
But we still need the money, and the money aspect is, is part of the timeline.
Okay, so clarification, um, there is a discussion about modulars only, not necessarily building onto Hardy. We'll do, the, the discussion has to happen this year to potentially put on the, the spring ballot for town meeting.
But one of the, yes, uh, one of the issues with Hardy is that, you know, there's not much space there. And you, you could be in a situation at Hardy, just like we are at Thompson, where you have modular classrooms, but you, you also want to have construction going. So the placement of those modulars will be important, and frankly, the number, because there's just not that much space. So it's not as simple or straightforward as one might think it would be.
So is there, can you tell us a timing about whether we're going to look at the idea of building permanently? I mean, those decisions are far away, but is there sort of a timeline for when we'll be exploring that issue?
Well, if you had a chance to take a look at the August McKibbin numbers, the, um, the, there's, there is a leveling off much faster at Hardy in terms of numbers, assuming.
Mugard doesn't get built.
You got it.
Yes, and we don't even really know the impact of that either, and when it would hit. So I, that's something that the town manager is, is going to be looking at and coming back to the school enrollment task force to talk more about. But there are a lot of ifs at Hardy that are a little bit more nuanced than they were, say, at, at Thompson. But, but I think the important message for particularly parents who are hearing this tonight, that it is definitely on our radar screen. We are definitely going to study it, um, and, uh, make plans to make this work for the school.
What I've heard from parents is I think they just want to know that it's being studied, even though they understand that the decisions may not be made yet, but that we have explored various plans and have an idea of. Mr. Carden.
Yeah, I, I thought I heard at the meeting that there, the next step, one of the next steps would be to draft the RFP with the facilities department to, to do that study.
It's been done.
Okay.
It's been done, and if, um, just to see, because there's so many options. One is, as you mentioned, is Stratton. There's certainly the issue of whether Thompson would be moved. But then there's also another option, um, of whether another company would give us a better price. And then there's the option of, should we buy it and then transport it from Florida or Georgia here, and then have it installed with yet a separate company?
So the, the news is that they're, assuming the task force at the next meeting approves moving ahead with the study? Then either us or the finance committee or somebody will fund a study to, to more outline, more better outline the, the possible solutions for Hardy.
Yes, I think we're going to need, I think we're going to need a study. We, we certainly, HMFH gave us a, a fairly good roadmap of options there. The, but if, if in fact, we go out the number of years, assuming that Hardy needs four classrooms per grade, then we're going to need three classrooms. And what's the best way to put three classrooms on that building? All right, um, I think we did the update, um, enrollment numbers.
We don't have a new document.
You don't have a new one yet, um, but I will get that to you as soon as we're able to get that. It's, we're now past October one, so whatever the number, snapshot was, those are all being looked at right now, but I will get you the latest one. From what I understand, uh, from just a conversation with our data people, that really hasn't changed that much. that really hasn't changed that much. Minor changes, but the overall is that we are approaching 5,500. And as, you know, specifically on September 22nd, we had 5,467 students. That is, represents a 4% increase over last year. I think we're going to be at 4% for sure. It's actually 4.1%. Dr. McKibben had us at 4.5%. So I think some of this, but I'll be able to tell you better the next time we meet where we stand. All right, and then timeline for Gibbs. Right now, there's not much to report. The architects are working on the design. I'm certainly thinking about what the schedule would be separate and apart from the physical building, what are we going to be doing for all the other parts of it in terms of what's the curriculum? How is it going to be scheduled? Busing issues, personnel issues. There's a lot of things that are going to go into this. And one of the things that's, actually, we're going to talk about tomorrow at an admin meeting, is talk a little bit about timelines in terms of what, when we need to move forward with different committees and so forth. And we're going to have a parent advisory committee. But right now, there's no need for one because there's no decisions or feedback to be had. So I think that we'll be reaching out to people probably in the next month or two to put that kind of committee together. They'll be helpful during the next phase of the project.
Mr. Carden.
So I'm surprised at the number of people that ask me, so what's going on with the Gibbs? What's been decided? I mean, there's been a few communications, you know, inviting people to that meeting and things like that. But there are even some teachers that are saying, "Oh, it's not opening till 2019." And so there seems to be a lot of confusion about what's going on. So at some point, you know, maybe when you open these new committee up, if there is just a very short clear, "The plan is to do this. We're hoping to open it fall 2018 barring any, you know, construction issues. It'll be for sixth grade. These committees will be working on programming it." A very clear, short communication might help clear up some of the confusion that still seems to be around.
Okay, that's good advice. One of the things the committee should know, because I think the public would like to know too, is that there are a lot of, as you know, there's been a lot of discussion about Gibbs tenants. And one of the things that I have been, I have been meeting with those tenants and working with the Director of Facilities to how we're going to accommodate their programs next summer in our schools. And so we're, and in fact, today I had a meeting about this very topic with our new Director of Recreation because we house right now two programs at Gibbs for the Recreation Department, one of which is a significant money raise. Fund, I should say...
Revenue.
Revenue, right, exactly right. Strong revenue source for the Park and Rec, which is an enterprise system. So it's very important that they, you know, have this income. So we're working on that.
Dr. Alzampe.
I just wanted to be sure that we're also thinking about, as we go forward with the Gibbs, about the needs of our populations, which are going to have more difficulty with the multiple transitions and working that into planning, you know, especially if it involves things like, do the spaces need to be similar in both Odison and Gibbs?
Right.
Anything that would affect the physical space that would be being built in at this point. I just, those are the kids that I'm the most concerned about as we go forward with this plan.
I think you're right. And I, we've done more work on transitions, but clearly we even need to do more when you have such a short time in one building. People have been talking about that. But then there's talking about understanding how to do something about it. And then it's getting down to what is that going to look like? And that's what the work will be.
For sure. Mr. Hainer.
For those that are interested in the community that, about the construction aspect of the Gibbs, I'd invite them to the permanent town building committee meetings. It's a standard item on the agenda and it's in detail of the current aspect of the construction. They're very good about that. And it's an open meeting, anyone is welcome to come. That's the construction aspect. Mr. Cole is the chair and he defers immediately. Any educational questions, sends them right up to Dr. Bodie.
Dr. Bodie, do you want to talk about the two meetings that were held? One with teachers and one with parents and about sort of Gibbs visioning?
We had two Gibbs visioning meetings, one with teachers and one with parents. Both were well-attended. It was a voluntary meeting for teachers and we had about 30, 35 to 40 teachers attend. All grade levels, in fact. And then also the same thing for parents. And this, both sessions were facilitated by the educational planner, who has been working with Finegold. In fact, he works with other districts and probably will work with us as we move forward with the high school as well. His name is David Stephen. So we have summary notes from both of those meetings and both of them are now on the website. I'm pretty, I know that for sure the teacher one is, and I'm almost positive we put the parent one on this week. We have a, under Facilities, we have, yeah, you want to... Yeah, I'm pretty sure we did because we just got, we got the summary. We're going to create a dedicated site to Gibbs under Facilities as we will also with the high school project.
Right.
I think it's going to be, in fact, with the high school, it's going to be really important to do that. And I will encourage people to even, I think we'll even have some kind of a newsletter type of part with that. But that's yet to, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves on that one.
Yeah, I just urge that we have a sort of a clear, quick link or button that we can go into and get a sense of what's happening with Gibbs and what's happening at the high school.
You know what I can do, and this might actually help with the parents who talked to Mr. Carden, and that is maybe send out an email to all parents of the elementary schools, but that may have middle school too. And tell them, remind them when we're planning to open Gibbs and give them the link to this information. I'll do that, okay. And Karen's going to help me remember to do that.
That'd be helpful. And I think, I mean, to Mr. Carden's sort of point about having some sort of timeline, say, you know, January through May, we're doing this kind of thing. And, you know, I know that's still being worked out, but I think for both the high school and for Gibbs, it'd be really helpful. And it could be with a caveat saying it's vague, you know, or it's not vague, but, you know, obviously subject to circumstances. But then people can sort of follow along, you know? Oh, it's January, we're probably in this kind of stage.
And then alert them where the site is so they can just, any documents we get is just going to go right on there. And then, of course, there's also the School and Enrollment Task Force. And if you start, if you've ever gone on that, you're going to...
It's just a list of things.
It's just so many documents that the committee's had to consider over the last year. Well, changing from buildings, I just have two quick things. One is I want to acknowledge this joint press release that went out late this afternoon from Chief Ryan and myself, basically alerting parents that, about the clowns that are, the nationwide... Yes, the clowns.
The clowns.
Yes. We've been finding that there's been clowns that have been luring kids into woods or into, and they're just feeling like they're preying on children. We haven't had any incidents around here. We haven't heard anything. But the fact that it is something that's been growing and talking about in social media and it's all across the country, we did get an alert this morning. And then as we thought about it during the course of the day, decided to do a joint press release, which was sent to all parents, media, and to all staff. So basically, the issue is that, you know, if anybody sees clowns, you call the police. Now, that may be problematic when you get to Halloween.
It's scary.
Inappropriate.
Inappropriate, scary.
Except I know tons of kids who walked in Halloween to dress up.
No, I don't want to make light of it, but it's, you know, it's unfortunate these things had to be said. But it's really, you're absolutely right. It's really the inappropriate, if anything, that just doesn't look right. It's better to be, you know, safe on this than not. So that's why we decided to put out joint press release. And then one other...
Dr. Alzampe, he has to quick.
I had heard of some students who were very concerned, I mean, to the point where they were fearful and staying up late at night. Would they, would it be appropriate for them to see their guidance counselor? Or to get some help?
Yes.
Or, okay.
If they, if there's any, if a student has fear about this or anything, and they should definitely talk to a social worker in their school or the guidance counselor.
Okay, they would get, the guidance counselor could get them out.
Yes. And at the middle school, all of our guidance counselors are social, or school adjustment counselors.
Thank you.
I also just want to take this opportunity to remind people that the, that we have, save a date for the AYCC Gala event again this year. It's going to be on Thursday, November 17th at 7:00 PM. Now, that is a...
School committee meeting. Talk about that, yeah.
Excuse me, I've got to say, with all our concerns about not hitting certain things, I think we've managed to have almost an event every single school committee meeting.
This wasn't the schools this time.
Well, no, no, there is a school.
The people take serious.
So, and the guest speaker is David Axelrod.
Oh. Okay, so we do want to raise this question about whether we want to shift our school committee meeting at that, because we also have a conflict with high school conferences, which is a conflict potentially for some parents, but also for parking. And so we do want to bring, I'm not sure what the appropriate time to bring that up is, but...
Probably under liaison reports.
Liaison reports.
Future agenda.
Well, okay, let's bring it up then. Great, awesome.
All right, that's my report.
Okay, great, thank you. So now we are on to consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Warrant for approval, warrant number 17047 dated 9/22/2016. Total warrant amount, $777,970.64. Approval of minutes, ASC regular minutes, September 22nd, 2016. Approval of AHS trip, AHS foreign exchange trip, to be determined. Originally, this is the point that Dr. Hainer, that Mr. Hainer brought up. Originally approved 10/22/2015. The clarification on that is that we are approving the, each trip each year, even though maybe the first trip was approved in a previous period. Approval of AHS trip, Cape Town, South Africa, February 16th to 28th, 2017. Approval of AHS trip, London and Environs, April 13th, 2017. Approval of AHS trip, Poland and Prague, June of 2017.
So move.
Wait, we have, probably have an abstention, right?
Yes, the 22nd, I got to take that up.
So, yeah, so let's take out the...
Just abstain?
The minutes.
You don't, you don't need to be present to vote the minutes.
To approve minutes?
But on the minutes side, just want to note, there's a slight correction that I forwarded to Ms. Fitzgerald on the minutes. So that I'd like to ask that they be approved as corrected.
Do, are we pulling it out from the consent agenda though? Or are we just, we're keeping it in there?
It's just a...
So the clarification is that...
Minor error.
Right, okay, so that there is a, as amended, the minutes as amended.
Oh, we can vote if we're not there. I didn't realize that.
Yeah, I didn't realize that either. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, it's unanimous for me too, yes. Okay, so the next item, just want to tell you what's going on here. Ms. Fitzgerald's idea was to actually have maybe a standing item for policy to review. She said it's much easier to sort in Novus if she can just sort it, rather than having to figure out where the policy is hidden. She can just pull it out and sort it by that. So even though today we have no policy to review, it's not a bad thing to sort of have it on. It may be sort of always here, right? And then you can just pull it up. And some days you won't have anything, and some days you will. Yes, Ms. Rayner?
Just for clarification going forward, so in the subcommittee meeting of policy procedures, if we bring forward something for first review, I tell you and it will show up there. Thank you.
Okay, good, good. Yes, Dr. Alzampe.
Can I suggest we write "none" if there weren't any?
Yeah. I think there was an expectation that there was going to be something and then we found out later on that there wasn't anything. But, okay, so we'll just, we'll keep it as a standing item and write "none" or write something. Yeah, sounds good. Okay, subcommittee and liaison reports and announcements, budget?
Budget, we'll be sending out a doodle in hopes to meet in the next two weeks.
Okay. Community relations, Ms. Starks? Okay, doodle, hope to meet.
Doodle went out.
Okay, district accountability, curriculum instruction and assessment, Mr. Schluckman?
Yeah, we did discuss the superintendent evaluation, which we then forwarded to the full committee.
Okay, great. Facilities, Mr. Thielman?
No report.
Okay. Policies and procedures, Mr. Hainer?
We met on October 6th, discussed procedures to address our policy on recent audit. Heard from members on priority of policies that we were looking at during the year. Our next meetings will be October 20th and November 9th.
Okay. School enrollment task force, we've gotten some report, but is there anything else you want to add? Anybody else want to add for the enrollment task force?
I think that the next, just that the next school in our target is Hardy.
Is Hardy, yes. Warrant committee, Mr. Hainer?
Everyone get paid again.
Okay. Liaison reports? Yes, Mr. Hainer?
CPAC had a coffee at Thompson on September 27th. Mr. Carden wasn't able to attend, so he asked me to go. Parents got a chance to meet the special education staff. Dr. Alma was excellent and her staff, all to be commended, did a great job. Parents were very positive, especially the new parents. They felt not only welcomed by CPAC and the staff, but their questions were answered. They were very happy. If I may just continue. OPAC had a coffee at Odison to meet the principal and what OPAC does for the new parents. Dallin PTO met on October 4th.
Sorry, what's the...
Pardon me?
Oh, townwide. Yes.
No, Dallin PTO.
Oh, Dallin, yes, sorry.
I was not able to stay too long, but shared concern on question number two and why they should vote no. Stratton PTO met on October 11th, talked on question two. Parents discussed year and adaptations because of the modular units on the different programs that the PTO does. And they passed the budget. And I'm sorry, I was not able to attend the permanent town building committee on October 4th.
Any other liaison and committee reports?
Let's see, I attended the Arlington Youth Health Safety Coalition meeting. What did we talk about? Mostly, we talked mostly, it was internal discussion about the coalition and we had some like team building stuff and did a lot of that stuff. The woman who is head of it, whose name is absolutely...
I know her first.
Ivy Laplante?
Ivy, yes, is engaged and broke her collarbone. So she was not at the meeting.
Any relationship between them?
No, not at all. No, she plays like some pretty aggressive sport and ran into somebody and so broke her collarbone. But I think that was after she got engaged. So that was the news that I came back from that with.
Anything else? And I urge, I urged people last time, but two people weren't here, that if you are a liaison to either a PTO or another organization in town and you have not yet made contact with them, to sort of reach out and make sure. And my general feeling is that they don't necessarily want you at every committee meeting, but they would like to see you and have an opportunity to interact with you and liaison with you.
Oh, I do have one other thing, actually. I have, I am going to be working with the library. They're offering a Girls Who Code offering this year. And I believe that there are still spots open. So it's meant, the goal of the organization is to close the gender gap in technology by incentivizing girls to come and really, you know, build a group of people that they can relate to in technology. And it's really exciting. They've grown, you know, year over year over year. When I went to Morgan's graduation, actually, the founder spoke at her graduation and I was so moved that I like looked up where I could do it. And then it turned out that the...
Right here.
Arlington Library, I was looking for facilitators. And so I, along with two other people, so we have three facilitators, which is great. And we had a really great open house and I'm just really excited. I think it's going to be a really great offering. And I hope that, you know, we can kind of get the word out so if people there for girls grades six to 12, and it meets every Wednesday from 3:30 to 5:30 at the library. It's free.
Great.
You don't have to have a computer. We will, they have computers that kids can have, so.
If you give me the information, I will ask principals to get it out in their newsletter.
Oh, cool, I will send you that.
Yeah, I've seen the information several different places, but...
Oh, good.
Yeah, so it's definitely been on my radar. Yeah, good. Mr. Hainer?
Announcements?
Yeah, so let's, so we're done with that. So yes, announcements, Mr. Hainer?
Massachusetts. Massachusetts Partner for Diversity, MPDE, and Education, had an education conference last Friday, was outstanding. You know something's really good if you sit there listening for five and a half hours and the time just takes off. I would like to publicly, publicly commend Dr. Bodie, she was one of the speakers, uh, was excellent, and, uh, heavy commendation to, uh, Rob, he was one of the coordinators for the program. It, it, I guess he was a little discouraged with the, the amount of people that came, but the, it was, the speakers were fantastic. They were, it was just a wonderful time, and if they are offered again, I would recommend any member of the committee.
Okay. Um, other announcements? Okay, uh, so future agenda items, Mr. Hainer?
I would like to see a financial report at the next meeting. Uh, I, I understand part of the thing, but, uh, we're already, we'll be at a point with two months into the year, and, uh, I would like to recommend to the committee that we might not need them on a monthly basis or even a, a weekly, quarterly, is, unless something big comes up.
Yep.
Uh, but, uh, a detailed one, so I'm requesting it.
I would love to be able to provide that at the next meeting, but I probably couldn't following. Uh, the person we have hired to complete the state report, either finish today or will finish next Thursday, and then she said she would, um, work on that.
Okay.
Just putting it on your radar.
Yep.
Believe me, that one is on my radar.
I'm sure it's on our radar.
Yeah.
So, other future agenda items, yes, Mr. Carden?
Uh, I was hoping we can get a more detailed report on the, the AHS building pro, process. There's sort of a checklist of things that we are supposed to do in this phase, and it would be nice to get a list of where, what we've submitted, what we still have to submit, and what's left to complete this, this stage.
Mm-hmm, sure. Yep. Uh, okay, so let's quickly discuss then the, um, calendar issue. So as I said, we have, um, the parking issue, because there will be high school conferences at night, this is, the issue is on Thursday, the seventeenth of November, um, so that's an issue that couldn't be solved by maybe putting out cones or some other issue, uh, but it also is the AYCC gala, and I know that lots of members of both the community and, and our committee, uh, like to go to that. And so do we want to entertain shifting that meeting? And just to talk to you about calendar, we have a meeting the immediate, the week before because of the short time period because of Thanksgiving, so we probably, for example, wouldn't want to have it on the fifteenth, because it would be only days since our, the previous meeting. Um, we might want to entertain having it early the next week. What is, what do people think?
Thanksgiving.
It's Thanksgiving weekend.
It's tough.
No.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Hainer?
I, I know it, we were going to have it on the seventeenth, is it, are the members amiable to the sixteenth? Yes.
I'm fine with the sixteenth.
Sixteenth is a Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
That's fine for me.
That's the Vision 2020 on education, is that night.
Oh, it is, right, I was like, I have something down the calendar, I was trying to figure out what it was. It is, it is, it's the-
That won't work. That won't work.
You're right.
How about fifteenth?
Well, the fifteenth, so again, we, we could-
Four days from the last time we met.
Right, so we had, we have it on the tenth.
We have a meeting on the tenth.
We already have a meeting on the tenth. Um, so you don't think that the Monday, the twenty-first, for example, would be the time, a time that we could do something?
No.
No?
No.
Oh, because you are out.
We, we, we traditionally, I, I, we, yeah, I don't know what the plan is going to be this year, but we traditionally take the week before Thanksgiving off.
We do, but we have especially new-
No, no, so personally-
Oh, personally, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, travel on that week.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
What about December first?
December first.
Or, so then ends up giving us three in a row.
Then we're going to have the eighth, and then we're going to have the, we're going to have three weeks in a row, but a bing, bang, boom. We can pretend it's November thirty-first.
Well-
Why don't we just see how far we get on the tenth?
Okay, right, actually-
See what we get down on the tenth of November.
So try to shove everything into the tenth.
We, we talked about possibly having-
What were you going to say?
Sorry.
The problem is that this is getting into the timeline when we're going to be having principals coming in and giving us their budget requests and things, and they have to be scheduled ahead of time, so-
Right.
We have to, we have to make a decision. Either we eliminate a meeting, or we move it or something, but we need to make a decision.
Do we have a timeline of how many, you know, what you want for principal presentations? Not yet.
It's usually taken two nights, um, splitting this, you know, elementary and secondary plus department heads.
Why don't we get a report from budget subcommittee on what the time, what, what has to happen and what has to happen, and then we can make a decision.
Well-
We have a budget calendar?
So, I mean, we have-
That's what we're going to do next.
So, let's see, I, we did talk tonight about, um, at an earlier meeting about, um, that the superintendent evaluation may not take us long, so we could maybe shove more things into the early November meeting. We can pretend, but we might, just as a warning, we might make it a much longer meeting than it, than normal.
Yeah.
Because we do have sort of expectations of things that we're trying to get happen in November. Um, so, yeah, Mr. Hainer?
Why don't we wait for the budget calendar and that aspect of it there to make a decision?
Okay.
If we do the first, we have one on the first, the eighth, and the fifteenth.
Mm-hmm, right, that's a lot.
That's why I'm asking about the budget calendar.
Laura and I are at a conference that night.
On the first.
On the first.
On the first.
We do not have, yeah, we do not, I cannot do a meeting on the first, but we do have one on the eighth.
That'd be dangerous.
We do not have a meeting on the fifteenth.
Yes, we do.